Good evening. The Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 8th will come to order. Are there any non-agenda public comments? Hearing none. Let the record show that all commissioners are present and accounted for except for Commissioner Patrick Cave, who is absent and excused. This evening we have no minutes to approve. We have one item of new business. I wanted to formally introduce David Vleet, our newest commissioner. David, welcome to joining us.
Thank you, Steve.
And we'll look forward to your thoughts and your counsel in working with us.
Thank you.
We move forward in our agenda to a public hearing, and actually it's a reopening of the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update. We have two agenda items this evening. First, the proposed code amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. And then we will hear on a third review of the transportation element. And so at this point, I'm going to turn the agenda over to David Boyd and also Art Sullivan.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm just going to open things up, and Arthur's going to lead the bulk of the discussion on the accessory dwelling units. This is our third review of this. There was an introductory review, and then on September 17th, we had a more thorough and detailed review, at which time we got direction from the commission to bring back code language. So what we thought we would do tonight, you do have the proposed code language in your packet, and so we can go back and go through the outline as a way of reviewing those issues, make sure that we've gotten your direction correctly, and also to finish going through the outline. We didn't quite get all the way through it last time, if you like. And then move into the proposed code language. If you'd like to jump straight to the code language, we could also do that. And then we didn't put this in the packet, but we have drafted a potential finding. There aren't going to be separate findings for each of these code issues that are part of the overall plan and code update. There'll be kind of an omnibus set of findings, but we thought it'd be appropriate to at least review the language for that at this point that would be added to those overall.
I think I'm fine with that agenda and overall. I want us to stay focused not just on reviewing this, but on what are the specific things this evening that we need to make decisions on, that you need guidance from us.
Right.
So I did notice in the memo that you had three issues remaining to be resolved right there. So let's make sure we focus on those.
Yeah.
And then if we do that review, both of the outline as well as the potential code amendments, that we do it in a timely manner.
Yeah. So those three issues are whether to allow rental of an owner-occupied unit for less than six months a year in the case of a snowbird that wants to rent their unit while they're out of, gone for part of the year, less than half the year. Specific size limits for attached and detached units. The proposal has two options for you to consider, and whether there's a need for a director's exception for the size of single-floor detached accessory dwelling units. That we'll get into in more detail. And here's the potential finding that I drafted for this, a single finding on ADUs that simply states that the planning commission finds that it is appropriate to modify regulations for accessory dwelling units to provide affordable housing options for Bothell residents while protecting the integrity of single-family housing areas. And we can come back to that if you wish. So the steps are to review the outline, do a page-by-page review of the code language, and to provide direction to staff for any changes. And if you're ready to go ahead and make a recommendation tonight, or if not, to continue deliberations to November 19th is when the schedule allows us to bring it back. So with that, I'm going to, yeah. We do have the images from last time available if you do want to.
So Dave, my only guidance would be that I'm fine with those as next steps for us. Let's try to limit this segment to at least, to no more than 45, 50 minutes. We're at 7:05 now, so let's try to be wrapping up by, let's say, 10 to 8. So if we have proceeded in a quickly, quick manner, and we can go ahead and do that code language review, let's by all means do it.
Okay. Ready to jump right into it?
Sure.
So what I'm going to suggest is what we tried to do is make it so that even though we have the outline, we've added into, after each section, what is the specific proposed language to be put into the code. So I would focus on the outline, and you can, if you want, refer and see how it then jumps into the code. But so I'd say if you go to Attachment 1, go to the first page, and as was noted, we provided you two choices for how, and this is something you were talking about at the last meeting, and that was how did you want to deal with owner occupancy for allowing some flexibility for the homeowner to, we did agree that they could be in either of the two units. The question was, was there some preference related to duration and the potential to rent? So on the middle of the page, one there, you see two options. One is the owner must occupy one of the dwelling units on the property for more than six months of each calendar year, be silent on the rental issue. And then the other is the owner must occupy one or the dwelling units for more than six months of each calendar year, and may not receive rent for the owner-occupied dwelling unit at any time during the year. So those are the two things we're bringing back. You obviously can take either of those or do some further modification.
So I would turn it over to ourselves here at this point. So either of those two languages, and any comments on them? Commissioner Clark.
I actually have a question first. So the first of the two options would, because it's silent on rental, would allow rental of the, either unit for six months, I guess. If the owner has to occupy it for six months, they could theoretically rent the other, for the other six months?
I think there would be no provision to preclude that, correct?
Okay.
I had one question. So on the second provision, this idea of may not receive rent for the owner, how are we really going to enforce that, or how would we really know whether they are or are not receiving rent?
So what happens in situations is, as with many code issues, you're going to kind of rely on a complaint probably, and then use code enforcement procedures.
All right.
But usually you have the ability, if somebody does raise it, you'd have a basis for looking at it.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I'd like to just say that I'm in favor of the second of the two. I think it falls in line with the affordable housing, that if they can rent it for six months of the year, that may be an opportunity for somebody that is temporarily needs housing, or a student or something like that, to rent that. And I think that's a reasonable way to look at it.
Commissioner Gastineau.
I'm sorry, Eric. So wouldn't you want one, then they'll allow them to?
I'm sorry, yes, I would want one, yeah. I apologize for that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, I'm in agreement with you on that. So that's why I was going, I was hoping he was going to want.
Yeah. I think I'm wearing my glasses upside down or something.
Any other comments, or I think we're kind of ready to kind of weigh in on this.
All right, let me just, just amongst ourselves. So all in favor of the first language, say aye.
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 I think that was unanimous. Or all in favor of the second? Okay. I think we're going to go with the first statement.
Okay. Related to that, what we were suggesting is some of that was addressed in the definition section, and because it only applied to the, this only applies to ADUs, we thought it was better to put it in the ADU section, and so we're proposing moving it from the definition section to the ADU code section. So there's no other, the language is the same, we're just suggesting it be moved. Okay?
Any issues with that? None? That's fine.
Okay. On limitation on occupancy, we are proposing that the language be added to 4B related to occupancy, which you see at the bottom of the page, of Page 1, and that is the total number of documents of both primary residence and accessory may not exceed the maximum number established by the definition of family and section, and then we filled in that in the code section. So I think this is something you were in concurrence last time, and so we've made that change to the draft code.
Any comments on that? Commissioner Gastineau.
I wasn't hearing, so just, and maybe I'm not reading this, but in the, on Page 2 under code language, it talks about a minimum of 300 and a maximum of 800. And then I go to the next box underneath it, and it says 220 square feet and a maximum of 900 square feet.
I'm not quite, I was actually dealing with a slightly different issue. That's the next issue.
Okay.
This is just about household size.
Okay.
And then I had a question about the actual number from the current code. Eight unrelated persons, was, that's something that we have discussed before. I know, I've been in homeowners association where that issue has come up, that eight seemed like a very high number. There were a lot of complaints about the amount of traffic that that would generate, and the parking situation that that would generate, because the area wasn't really intended for that high of a density of, you know, usually when they're unrelated people, they each have their own car, they bring more traffic, they bring, it's like eight, eight houses all in one. So was there, was there, is that something that's open for discussion, or is that?
That seems like a broader issue than ADUs.
Yeah, that is, we're really, and I had a number of comments on current Bothell code definition of a family, and it's eight, and cooking and living together, et cetera. But I don't think that's really in kind of what we're discussing this evening. So I'm not saying your issue's not important one that could and should be debated, but I don't think that's what we're going to debate this evening.
Can I ask you a question, Mike? Is this a perceived, or are you actually seeing this? We have, because this is going to come up again, I don't know if we want to spend, we've had a, one of our residents come and talk about this, and we're going to talk about this on a different issue, but I'm just asking you, Mike, is this something that is actually happening in subdivisions you know of?
Uh, yeah.
Or is it perceived that it could happen?
Yeah, so I used to be on my homeowners board, and what's interesting is at the time, there were complaints about it.
Okay.
And so now it's interesting for me to be on the other side of the issue, and now see, you know, on the code side. But I absolutely respect that this isn't the time to have that conversation, so I'll leave it hanging out there, and we'll get to it at a later time.
Fair enough.
And I would add that this is something that might come up in discussions around, as University of Washington Bothell, as more students looking for housing, if we start seeing houses being converted to student rentals on a wide scale, I think that's something that we might need to address.
The next item, this is where we're dealing with size of units, and so the proposed language that we have here is on the bottom of Page 3 of Attachment 1, and it's incorporated in the Section 4E of the code, if you're trying to go back and forth. And basically what we've proposed here is separate, just to give you the flexibility in the conversation, because you were at one point talking about detached versus attached. So we've pretty much used the same language for the attached and detached for the first sentence, or actually in both of them. And that is, one is to limit the size to both a 40, and we've put in shading the 40%, that's up to your discretion, but a percentage of the total living space, of the combined living space of the two units, and also, with also a maximum square footage for the ADU. We wanted to put that same language separately for attached and detached because of the conversation, that way you could pick different figures. And then we also have a sentence about having some discretion to the director to allow an increase in that size if necessary, because of using, efficiently using the, you know, the layout of the home. So if you have a daylight basement, if you use that provision, you sort of have some dead space that kind of gets lost in no man's land. So, and then we also explicitly did add a sentence about making it clear that the size of a detached ADU is exempt from the provisions of detached structures, because that's limited to 5% of the lot area?
Yes.
Right, so we're explicitly exempting a detached ADU from that limit, but they still have to follow the limits that you would put here.
So the staff proposal is, first of all, Item 3 would remain regardless, and then the choice, you're asking for kind of a recommendation of either one or two?
Well, you could have both. If you ended up having the same percentages in square footage for both, then you could combine it just into one.
Right.
Or you can do both if you want to have different limits in detached versus attached.
So let's discuss this. Any particular thoughts with regards to whether we need separate language for an attached versus detached ADU with regards to size?
Well, I have a question first. For a detached, the setbacks would remain the same as to what they are right now, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I can see where having a smaller, having a lower, maximum square footage for an attached would make sense than, you know, having like 800, 800 square feet for an attached and 1,000 for a detached, I think might make some sense as well. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that personally, as long as the setbacks are, you know, are met.
Any other comments, questions? What about the idea of the discretion of the director if any of these, if the ADU is all on one floor? Do we want to include that type of language in there or not? I would be in favor of that, of leaving it in there.
And I'd just like to point out, we flagged that on the detached unit, because since accessory buildings are limited to 5% of lot area, it's, the only situation where that would come into play would be, say, if you chose 800 square feet as your maximum size for a detached unit, would be on a lot close to 20,000 square feet, where you could build a garage, 1,000-square-foot garage, and then if you wanted to use the full upper floor for a detached ADU, that's the only area. And so if that's not an area where you think we need to allow the discretion, we could leave that out of the detached requirement.
Thank you. How about on 1,000, they're kind of, right now, it's as written, it's either 1,000 or 800 square feet as one of the other maximums. Any particular feedback on that?
800 square feet is basic size of a, size of a basic two-bedroom apartment, basically. So I think for an attached, that's a reasonable ADU. Again, from my perspective, I think from a detached, I'd have no problem having it increased to 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so you're favoring detached having a larger maximum than an attached?
I kind of want to echo Mr. Stedman's comments, that I think that 800 square feet, I think that also falls in line with kind of the affordable housing aspect of things. If it's a little bit smaller, likely the rent might be a little bit lower too, so it'd be affordable, and I think, you know, I think that is a reasonable size. I would, I would think that, I really don't see a reason why we would change the square footage between the two, and it might simplify the code to have it be the same for both so that they could be combined, but I'd be fine either way.
Any other comments or feedback? My own thoughts are, first of all, I do agree with including both a percentage of the floor and a hard number. I'd be in favor of the, actually, I'd be in favor of the larger number, but I understand the argument of 800 supporting a more affordable unit, and that being part of what we're trying to achieve here. So I guess I would say that from my standpoint, I would, I would go with both statements, that we're going to have a separate one for attached and detached, 800 square feet, and then allow the planning director discretion for sentence, statement number two. So I think I'm reflecting the wishes of the commission, but I'm very open to, and any questions on what we're trying to provide you in the way of clarification?
So, oh, go ahead, Arthur. So that means, so you're going with the 40% in both?
Yep.
And then are we doing the 800 in both, or 800 in attached and 1,000 in detached? Or 800 in both?
I didn't get a chance to weigh in. With this, with this, I would, I think that we're breaking quite a bit of new ground here. I think that if we went with 800 with both, with the idea that if it's covering over a whole garage, or it's a special exception where it makes sense, you're not going to just wall off a portion of it so you could have it above a garage, then there is this director's discretion. This is a pretty big deal. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, for us to come this far, it's a, it's pretty big. So I would, I'd think 800 for both, and then have that out for the director.
Commissioner Stahl, any thoughts?
I don't have anything to add beyond what's already been said.
Commissioner Vleet?
So this is without regard to how big the lot size is, is that correct?
Correct, but that's where the setback issue comes in. You still have to meet setbacks and stuff.
So interestingly, in the way of efficiency, let me, I think what I hear is we're all in favor of 40%. Let me, let's just take a real quick vote on, all in favor of an 800-foot limit. Say aye.
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 All opposed?
Well, 800 square feet for the attached, yes. I oppose the detached.
You wanted to have a separate number for detached?
And here's my concern. I think if you're going to build a separate structure, it ought to have a little bit, it ought not look out of place. It ought not look like a, like a little playhouse, or a little dollhouse, or something. That's my concern from a, from a detached in a neighborhood, as opposed to an attached.
And you think that extra 200 square feet?
Steve, let me ask you a question. What about, what about lot coverage? Is this exempt from lot coverage?
We are proposing that it would be exempt, detached.
There's no angle for 1,000, because now we're already, we're talking, these are exempt from existing lot coverage, so in that, someone that's built to the maximum size that are normal house, now they're going to, now we're going to allow them to build another in their, in their setback. This is, this is a big deal.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to create a lot, I mean, okay, they have, they've met the setback, but I mean, that could, that's going to be a very densely.
It could be.
Built, R5400s, you know, you're talking.
Most houses built today on small lots are building up to their setbacks anyway, right? A lot of the time.
And that's what I'm, and that's what I'm saying as well, as long as they meet the setbacks, I don't, I don't think the detached are really going to be an issue. I think, I think the detached will be limited to larger lots of 9,600 square feet.
Let's ask a couple more questions so we don't get, what about building height?
The, as it stands right now, the height limits for accessory buildings would still be in effect, and those are 20-foot maximum, or the height of the primary structure, whichever is lower. So now that's something that we could, we could also allow an exception for detached accessory dwelling units, but we hadn't included that in the code language so far.
I also have a question about, is there an issue, or is there a limitation as far as floor area ratio, impervious surface limitations, lot circle diameter, anything like that that would govern the detached, the ADU unit?
Not, the impervious surface limit in single-family zones is essentially dealt with as a, limitations on impervious surface in the front yard, so, which is an area that you couldn't put a detached ADU or, anyway. So it doesn't affect that, wouldn't affect lot circle, because that's a plating issue. I think we were thinking that a higher limit might be appropriate for attached, so that the exception where you're doing a daylight basement sort of setup would be, not be necessary in as many cases, but certainly is possible to go the other way as well.
So the roof square footage does not factor into the impervious surface limitation on a, on a lot?
Oh, I'm sorry. Impervious surface is 35%.
So they, so they still couldn't exceed that 35%?
Right.
Including the ADU, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's also going to, I think, limit how much, how dense the property looks if you have that maximum? Because that includes the driveway, roof area.
No, it's just buildings.
Yeah, it's building coverage, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the impervious services in single-family is limited to the limitations on front yard.
These accessory dwellings, if I'm not mistaken, are not subject to lot coverage, though. I thought that, I thought that's what.
They're not subject to the 5% limit for accessory buildings, but they would count toward the total building coverage, the 35% as we've drafted the code language.
Pat, I think that might address your, partially address your concern.
Well, if it's, if it's not, the building, I thought that it was exempt from, because if you had one filled up, I thought they were going to be exempt, so.
Okay. So should I also point out, just to give you some context, a two-car garage is going to be around 500 square feet, to give you a sense of scale. So what you're kind of doing with 800 is making a two-story building the size of a two-car garage work as an ADU. If you're going to build above a garage, it's odd, not likely to be close to 800 square feet, or more than 800 square feet. So if you're thinking of, you know, what you were saying, I'm not sure I would characterize an 800-square-foot structure detached as necessarily a playhouse in terms of scale. And so if you think of, most of the slides I showed you of detached, where were they located? Above a two-car garage? So I would, you know, given the comments about big change and big jump, and usually there's more concern and caution about the detached units than there are the attached units in terms of neighbors, I'd just put that out there for your consideration, is the suggestion.
So I think we're, just hearing the comments, I think that we're in favor of language for both attached and detached. So I think that's the first thing I'm hearing. I think the second thing I'm hearing, there's not a lot of debate around this 40% number. I think it's around both having the raw number between the two, and whether or not that raw number's different. I think that that's what, kind of where we're at. So I'd like to, I'd like to ask a yea or nay vote on whether or not we want to have, let's just word it this way, an 800-square-foot limitation on both? Let's start with that. All in favor of an 800-square-foot limitation on both? Say aye.
Aye.
And I would say aye. All in favor of a different, say, 800 square feet on one and 1,000 square feet on another? Say aye. And I think that's what you were saying, Commissioner Stedman.
Yes, but your point was, was well-made.
So I think we're going to, we're going to go with the 800 square feet on both.
All right.
And the director's exception for both.
And approval of the director's discretion.
So we can combine those into one, yes.
Okay. All right. Now we're on to the items that we didn't cover in the last meeting, but we've also, but we have come back to you with suggestions on how to address some of those issues, so we think some of them might be relatively straightforward, because we're, in some cases, looking at continuing with the language you have now. So this is now on Page 4 of the outline, and the first is related to entrances, and we are proposing something that is, your current language is, no more than one front entrance shall be visible from the street. We're proposing, no more than one front entrance shall be on the front of the house and clearly visible from the street. The accessory unit shall be on the side or rear or screened from the street to avoid the appearance of a duplex.
Could that screening include landscape buffers? Would that, would that be considered screening?
I think it could be, yes.
I'm curious what the motivation for, for that restriction is?
It's primarily to avoid the appearance of a duplex, where you have two front entrances with equal prominence on the front, where, so basically to make it look like there's clearly a primary unit and a. clearly a primary unit and a secondary.
Because the ADUs are only going to be approved for, for single-family residence zoning. Any other comments or questions with regards to that language?
Are we, are we, are we choosing between the two bullet points, or the two bullet points and the underlying language below?
We're suggesting the underlying language, but you're free to choose from any of the recommended language or the bullets.
So really, the only difference between the bullet, the second bullet and the other point is the, the director's discretion.
Right.
Is that pretty much-
Yes, right.
So, so, but there is discretion in that second underlined sentence, so that's a discretion of just staff in general, that they are, or, what's the, I guess I have a question about what the, the criteria is for which you'd be approved on, on having a shielded entrance, or something like that?
Right. Well, I think with lots of code language, it doesn't say every time at the director, I mean, it's sort of staff, it's administrative-driven interpretation. So here, they would have, whoever's doing the review would have to find a test of not being clearly visible from the street. Would be the direction they'd have to take in making an approval.
We generally try to avoid making too many items in the code go to the director's discretion. We thought that that size limit was one that justified it.
Yeah, I can just say, as a kind of a philosophical manner, I mean, if adding discretionary language for the planning director is, is really adding value and necessary, okay, but as a kind of a general philosophy, I'd like to see us avoid that. You know, so that, just to provide clarity, and it also then provides more of an assurance of equality, of, of treatment for, for our citizens. Not that I think our planning director is, would compromise that, but just why not even? Let's just keep that out of the code if we can.
Can I suggest a, kind of a mix of the second bullet and the underlying language? Maybe take out the language about the planning director in the second bullet point, but allow the potential for a second entrance on the front of the house? Because I think the underlying language just completely disallows that on the front side of the house, having a second entrance. But if, but leave it up to the discretion of staff, if, if it can be adequately screened on the front of the house, that that would also be allowed, front, side, or rear, as long as that criteria was met. That would be my suggestion.
And I think that language almost is a little more clear than what we have proposed, so I, I think what you're trying to do there is pretty much what we were suggesting, and maybe a little more clearer.
Okay.
Okay, so Commissioner Clark, just so I'm, you're basically accepting bullet, bullet item number two, I guess, or it's the, the middle one there. We're taking out the planning director, but basically leaving the rest of the other language intact?
I think so.
Any other comments or other opinions on that?
Actually, one clarification, though. They, this says, shall not detract from or alter the single-family character of their principal unit. I think maybe the, the aspect of having it be screened from the street ought to be moved into that lang, ought to come along with the elimination of the planning director, so, so that it's not just, so maybe that, they are discouraging it being visible from the street. Because I think in the first one, it does allow for it to be visible, and whether it detracts from this, alter the single-family characters seems to be a little arbitrary, almost.
Right, so what I'm hearing is, this one needs a little more wordsmithing, potentially, working from the second bullet, but adding in the screening concept, and taking out the planning director language.
I'm okay with that. I, I was leaning towards the, the staff-proposed language, but I think we're pretty close to that there, anyway, so.
I think.
All right.
And just one-
Commissioner Stahl?
Yeah, one question, question on that one. Do we, this is the engineer in me. Is it obviously defined which side of the house is considered to be the front, versus the side, especially in the case when it's on a corner, or, or on an irregularly shaped path?
Both, both has only one front. You guys determine what the front of the house is, don't you?
Yeah, essentially, on a corner lot, the, the director has the discretion to determine which is the front. Usually we, we will accept what the, what the developer, the homeowner wants to do, unless it's, there's an obvious reason to establish one.
I could see some maniacal cases where, and this may be going too far out on a limb, but on a corner lot, someone could have two, two entrances on what they call the side, one entrance on the front, so they would actually have three entrances in their house, which may violate the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. I don't know how, how real that, that, that becomes or not.
I think that, but by having the language in there of, or screened from the street to avoid the appearance of a duplex, I think that that allows some flexibility for, for the developer, to put a door, as a corner lot, might, it might make sense to do that, but, so we're not saying you can't put a door, we're just saying, screen it, put some landscaping, you know, that's what we're really trying to do here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I, I think we're ready to go away. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. The next item, we're not proposing any revision to your current language in terms of how to define additions, and in terms of their sort of design qualities that are looked for, if an addition's involved with an ADU.
Agreed. I approve that. Any, any comments on that? Or approved on that?
Okay. And then under parking, we're not proposing what we don't think is essentially any difference. What we're just trying to do is say, one additional parking space to that which is required for the primary dwelling unit. That way, you may have some zones where you don't require three, or, you know, so this is just saying, whatever's required for a single-family, plus one. Now, if they already have that plus one on site, they're okay. It's just, they have to have one more than is required for that unit in the zone that it's within.
Any comments on that? I strongly support that.
Okay. All right. On the next one, the next one is attached versus detached. This is just, we thought, some cleanup, to make it very clear in the code, in section four, in the introduction, that they're allowed in attached or detached, so we just put some language in to make that clear right up front.
I think we're good.
Yep.
Okay. And I think this last point in this section is sort of a moot point for two reasons. One, you already have some language related to detached, and because they're both the same, you landed in the same place, it's, I think we're fine with what you have in the code to describe detached.
I want to track right with you. Where are you at?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page five, and it was the last bullet just before permitting, and it was related to definitions, clarity for detached. And that was only brought up because we said, if you had different rules for detached versus attached, some people might really be concerned on what they were considered. So since you're using the same rule on size, and you already have a definition about detached, we think you're fine.
Yep.
So we think no language is needed.
Agreed.
Okay? Okay, so now we're on permitting and enforcement. Again, not discussed last time. We have, we gave you several bullets, though, in the outline before, about the, having a formal permit process, or an application process for an ADU, as well as a document recorded against the property. We are recommending that the first two bullets be included as a 4H and 4I. We think the fee does not necessarily need to be spoken to, per se, explicitly in the code, but we do think the first two bullets are worth adding to your ADU provisions.
Any particular feedback on that?
The only thing I have is that we should include Snohomish County in that as well? The reference to King County, or maybe just county requirements?
That's, that's a very good point, thank you.
And any other comments? Mine, I strongly support this idea of it running with the land, and that it would be recorded and, and carried forward.
Okay. Okay. For utility hookups, we are saying not to require separate utility hookups, and at this point, we think, at least try to approach that with no explicit language, per se. But it might be good to hear your intent stated, if you agree with that, so that that would be on the record for working with staff in the future.
We discussed this last time, and I felt that, my, my feeling on this was that the separate utility hookups was kind of one of the definitions of a duplex, kind of heading you in that direction. So I think, I'm personally fine with that. I'm, I think we're, we're in agreement.
Okay. So we're down to one last issue, and this was a discussion we had a little bit with you, but we didn't look at language, about, do you do anything to maybe encourage people who have them now illegally to come in, and things along those lines? And so we gave you several options that, and in the end, we are suggesting some language that, I think it is, and I guess we'll have to look at King County Department, we'll have to clean that up as well, that we would have, let's see, did I, I thought? Let's see. Is this, I'm thinking if we got this, I'm trying to see, I've got a little lost here. I know, this is on page six, which we already-
It's in the, that's only in the code language.
Right. I'm actually, I don't know if we have our format, but in the chart, there is a provision, there was an option, like in the third box, no, I'm sorry, I missed, I lost something here. There was, we thought we had something that gave like a two-year, I guess it's the last box, a two-year window? And whether or not that's needed or not, that's a question. I mean, the, we've had some cities actually kind of put language in there to say, and we're going to, you know, minimize the fee, or take actions to sort of really encourage people to come in, and one way they did that was minimize the fee for a certain period of time from the date of enactment of the code update. And I must admit, I'm not quite seeing what I'm looking for at the moment.
It's in the second box, I think. You're talking about the two-year?
Right.
In the bottom box.
In the bottom box.
In the bottom box, right.
I see them in both.
Oh, it's actually in both, I guess.
It is in both, yeah.
Right, there's a couple different.
Oh, there was.
And the, and the third box, it actually waives it, the ADU permit fee.
So, just, I'll just make some opening comments, and then I'd like to hear any comments or feedback from the other commissioners. And that is, that I think that a homeowner who has done this, or they purchased a home that already had one of these built, I think that they instinctively would like to have their ADU become legitimate, if you will, if at all possible. I think the reason they do is that they're thinking in their minds, at some point, I'm going to sell my house, I would like to have this be recorded, I'd like to have it be advertised as a feature of this house, I'd like to be able to kind of come out of the shadows, if you will, with regards to it, which is fine, it's, it's adding value to the, to the property. So, I think for, if we can encourage our homeowners to do that, and they're going to, I believe, if they're, what they have conforms with what we've established. Now, if they have something that's fifteen hundred square feet, and, then it's, that's not going to happen, probably. But I think, at least for those that have, that are conforming, let's encourage them to do that. So those are my initial comments on this. Any, any other thoughts?
Well, my thought is, as you said, I think they will add value to the, to the homes.
Right.
So, there's, there's an incentive right there for homeowners that have these, that have not been, or, that have, that have not been identified, to, to have them identified, to have them recorded. I think it ought to, I think it ought to flow with, with the recording of the home. But it's going to be very important that they, that they meet the building codes. I mean, that to me is going to be the key right there.
Right.
So if, you know, if we have a reduced permitting fee, I'd be all for that. I would just want to make sure that they, that they, that they met the building codes. I, and perhaps what we do is we say, okay, you've got, you know, from the date of enactment, you've got twelve months, or fourteen months, or, you know, some time period with that reduced fee, and after that-
Well, and, yeah, I mean, you raise a good point. I mean, when you say they've met the building codes, it could be that they meet the square footage part of it provision, but it could be that there's been wiring done that hasn't been inspected, there's been plumbing done that hasn't been inspected, and there could be all other things that were done by a side contractor, or the homeowner themselves, and, and you're saying we want to have, and let me ask that question. So if a homeowner comes forward and says, yeah, I have one of these, and I want to, you know, apply for a permit, are they then going to have to go back and have every kind of system in that, as, just as if it was new construction, have it be inspected?
That could-
Answer, tell me your thoughts on that.
So part of it will be, can they show that the space was legally built in the first place?
Right.
That as an ADU, but just legally built. And then they converted it, maybe they didn't do that part, but the space was originally built according. If not, if I went through this experience myself, they will generally try to determine the year it was built, and they will say, did you bill to the code when it was built? But, so yes, and in fact, if you, if you look at the last box, the last box is basically saying, it's given a time period, and it's also saying, you otherwise meet the requirements of, the provisions of this section and other applicable code requirements. So that would trigger, it's still got to be a safe unit, and everything like that has to meet all code that's applicable. And what you would potentially do, if you wanted to add the fee thought, which is in the box, and then go, add a three there, during that time period, the ADU permit fee would be waived, or whatever you want to suggest in here. So you could add something to that last, if you're worried about the condition of the unit and meeting otherwise, then you would, I'd lean towards the last box, because that's clearly stating that. But then what you could do is add another, another phrase in this, in that box to account for, encourage, you know, give them a little enticement for, for a period of time.
Well, I, I'll just jump in first here and say that I, I would, if we are going to legitimize these ADUs, we want them to be up to code.
Right.
And that would, and it's in the homeowner's best interest to do that. I mean, even if there's, you know, expense with regards to updating electrical wiring, or whatever, we want that to be done. So I, I think we do want to call that out. That, that would be my own thought on that. As far as waiving the permit as an incentive to have them come forward, I'm probably in favor of that, too. So, any thoughts? Commissioner Fleet?
Now, as far as encouraging people, how would homeowners that previously had one of these, how would they find out about this two-year? Or would it be kind of like, if they, if we ever find out about it?
Well, I would imagine there would be kind of a, a lot of normal notification process that we go through to notify the public of many things, whether it's on our website, various newspapers, I mean, we have kind of formal processes in the city to, to make sure this notification occurs. Am I right on that, Dave?
Well, we try. How much the general, average citizen follows our website is, and sees those notifications is always a concern.
Well, I, I would like to see us do that. I mean, whether it got into the Botha Reporter or not, I mean, I think this is a fairly significant thing we're talking about here, and I would like to see this be hit, you know, subpublicized, public communications methods.
And if I could ask a question slash make a comment, I just wanted to clarify that the language that we're looking at here is to waive whatever ADU fee the city charges. If somebody needs a building permit, that isn't explicitly covered unless you wanted to even go, I mean, that's not what we've typically talked about. So I just wanted to clarify the difference between the ADU permit, whatever fee the city comes up with, versus building, any building permits that are needed. So clarification if the intent was just the ADU fee.
I'm thinking just the ADU permit.
Agreed.
Okay. And then the comment part is that you do have a new commissioner here. I'm with Arch, which is a partnership of all the cities in East King County, and we're your housing staff, essentially. One of the issues we've identified, Mike Stengers here also as well, works a lot with City on Planning Issues, is we're trying to get a number of the cities together in the next three, few months, to actually talk about, how do we increase awareness, or make ADUs a more prevalent form of housing in East King County? Because a number of the members are speaking, just as you are. This seems to be a really good solution. We have it, it hasn't been bad, but can we get more? So there is a general interest, and the last time we had that conversation, seven or eight years ago, we actually did do some community public outreach as part of that. So, there is another angle, aside from the work you're doing here, where that, there might be opportunities. I get the word out.
Thank you. So just from a times check standpoint, we're at seven forty-nine, so we're at about forty-five minutes, although I think we've made some-
You're there.
Yeah, we've made some really good progress.
You're done.
Great. Excellent.
Can I throw one more thing out there? As far as the, the building inspection is concerned, I think, maybe there's, if we are going to kind of grandfather somebody in, I think, I agree with you- gonna kind of grandfather somebody in, I think, I agree with you that we, we really do need to make sure it's up to code, and I think there are certain issues that are more important, others like life safety, and emergency access, maybe energy code, that sort of thing, that, I wanna make sure that we're not getting ourselves into trouble by not addressing, by not requiring people to do that. I think there's-
Completely a part of my comment, was that, yeah, whether you're talking about liability for the city, or safety for the citizen, absolutely.
And that's where the last box, I think, comes right out and says that, probably pretty clearly.
Yep.
Okay? Not only this section, but as any other applicable code requirements.
Okay.
Okay?
So, we've really, we've gone through the outline, as you mentioned, ARCH, and I think we have-
This is all the suggested changes that we have, all the red line that you see in there is reflected in the comments that we've gone through. So, we have no more. If you have more, we, of course, address those, but we've gone through all the issues that we've identified at staff level.
Any other issues that we would wanna raise? I don't think so. The one thing that we haven't done is that kind of page-by-page review of any, of the code itself, Dave, and I don't know if-
And what I'm saying is, essentially, you have, by going through the outline, we have touched base with every change you see in here.
Right.
And we'll see the code in its final format one more time, is that right?
Correct.
So, let me just kind of think out loud here, so what kind of a motion do we need to kind of put in place here to cap this off for this evening?
Well, you have two, two options. You can, you could direct us to incorporate these changes into the code language, and make a motion to recommend these changes, and conclude this, your deliberations, or you could ask us to bring those back on November 19th, at least for, for a review, to make sure that we've got it right.
Okay. So, the chair will entertain a motion to either one of the points, or the descriptions that Dave just described.
I make a motion that we have, we have you bring back the recommendations that we've just discussed on November 19th, for the final review.
A second.
Go in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Thanks so much.
So, Dave, I think we're ready to move on to the transportation element of the agenda, am I right?
That's right.
And, so I would, I think at this point, we're gonna have Sherman come forward. Thank you for wading through that previous segment, Sherman. And I had one question for you, the agenda said that this is the fourth review, but yet the memo said this is the third review, which is correct.
It's the third.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, yeah, I guess I would just like to frame this up the way I did for the first topic, and that is, that we're at 7:53, if we could be wrapping this up by no later than, let's say, 8:25 to 8:30, let's try to make that happen. So, at this point, the floor is yours.
Let me just give me a minute to load this up. Here we go. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, well, this is the, the third, third review of the first, or your third part of the first review, should say, of the transportation element. Our previous, our previous presentations, we, just a kind of a brief review here. The first part, we talked about the background relationships with the GMA, and some of the regional transportation setting elements. The second, the second meeting we had, we talked about some public transit, and bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and this being the third part, is we're gonna focus on the goals, and policies, and actions of the element. In the future, future meetings, for the November 19th, we will, we will bring in local transportation settings, more of the details of how traffic operations for existing and future conditions are, and then the final part will be the financing section of the element, to be brought at a future date. Tonight, it's myself, Sherman Gong, I'm city transportation planner, and with me is our traffic consultant, Farr and Peers, and Don Samdahl, and he's going to help present a part of this presentation for you, and I'm gonna go ahead and let him start here.
Good evening. I'm just going to give a little highlight on some of the possible adjustments in the state requirements, and then Sherman will walk through some specifics. The State Growth Management Act does require goals and policies to be part of the comprehensive plan. One of the things that's really been emphasized in this go-around is addressing all modes of travel, and so we're recommending a few adjustments to your policies to address that. And then, the GMA also requires development regulations, capital budget decisions, and other activities to be consistent with the goals and policies, so we're working on making sure that happens. In your materials, this is a little bit of a messy slide here, but on the next slide, I'll show you the proposed goals. We, we took a look at the eight goals that are in the current plan, and recommending doing some combinations of some of the goals, and cleaning up some of the language, to create, in essence, a series of six goals, and I think if you look at them in detail, you'll see that they, they really do still cover all of the topics that were in the original goals, they just do it in a little bit more streamlined manner. The, I'll just hit high points on each one of these, and then we can come back in some of the more detailed discussion, but the first goal, which actually was combining Goals 1 and 8, would merely say to move people and goods safely and efficiently, and so that's a very straightforward goal. The second goal is identifying that there is a trade-off between mobility needs and protecting neighborhood character, and mobility, that means we're not going to, in essence, you know, provide eight-lane highways all through the city, through the neighborhoods, just to make, make it easier for people to get around in their cars. The third goal talks about supporting growth and vibrancy in the commercial and employment areas. The fourth goal specifically talks about reducing single-occupant vehicle trips by encouraging alternative modes. The fifth goal is one that is specifically out of the Growth Management Act, and that is the need to partner with other agencies and organizations to make sure that the system works efficiently. And the last goal is to, is around the whole subject of sustainability, and we define sustainability not just from an environmental standpoint, but also from a fiscal standpoint, that whatever you implement needs to be something that you can afford, and can afford to maintain and operate.
Before-
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back to those.
Yeah, sure.
So, just make sure I'm reading this correctly, so we currently have transportation goals, it's on page TR1, and at least in our packet, we have eight goals, and it looks like, actually on the following page, there was a proposed ninth goal, but you're, you're suggesting that we consolidate these eight or nine goals into these six. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, the, so, this is a, what we're gonna present today is just some, some of the streamline, like, like Don is saying, about the goals in general, and this is a proposal, but what you have in the packet under T, page TR1, and the rest of the element, mainly is edits that we feel need to be added, possibly in addition to this streamline here.
Okay.
So, the final goal, TRG9, on the page DTR2, is just an addition, because that's something that's in addition to the existing goals we have.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm just clarifying, are we trying to, to go to nine goals, or go to six?
We'd ultimately look like we're going to seven goals.
Yeah. So, it'd be the six that you're putting on the screen, plus item number nine?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I should've mentioned it, I'm sorry. So, we feel that probably the easiest way to deal with this is, when you talk about some of the individual policies that have been outlined, if there's agreement on those, and if there's an agreement that they should be restructured, it's easy to kind of move, move things around, but rather than try and do everything at once, we're doing it in two pieces, so.
Okay. Could you put those goals back up on the screen for us? So, let me ask you, just as a, kind of an overall, where, what was, what's underlying all of these goals, and that is, are there, is there some type of state, like, it mentioned in the memo, Vision 2040, good, the State of Good Repair Plan, are those particular state initiatives, are they kind of reflected in these goals, are they what, is it, is that what's driving these goals?
The, yes, actually, those two that you mentioned are regional goals, and there's a number of multi, our multi-county policies that have been established, and so, we're trying to be as consistent with those as possible, so the State of Good Repair one is, is an example, and a lot of the specific focus on the multimodal aspects is also embodied in, in these multi-county policies.
I guess I'd just like to ask the commissioners for their thoughts. Goal number four, TRG4, reduce single-occupant trips by encouraging walking, bicycling, and taking transit. Is that the direction that we think Bothell wants to go? And that is that we wanna have as one of our goals, that is to reduce single-occupant vehicle trips?
I think if we're talking about downtown Bothell and the redevelopment, certainly. I think if you're talking about some of the other neighborhood, you know, the, the subareas that we're gonna be talking about, that we were gonna talk about last week, I think that's not a goal. I mean, you're, you're looking at developing some neighborhoods that are gonna have-
That, that was, that was behind my question, and that is that there are parts of Bothell that are, where there's higher, there's higher density now, and it's getting higher, where this is an achievable goal, but there's many neighborhoods at Bothell that are reliant on cars, and probably going to be, therefore, we would wanna have a goal in there that provides as, as much efficiency for the users of single oc, of vehicles, single-occupant vehicles. So, I'm just, just probing on that particular one a little bit, and trying to get the feeling from the rest of the commissioners, your thoughts on that. Mr. Stall.
Yeah, I, I really like a lot of these. With respect to number four, I, I think we can clarify what we're really after, you know, I, I would wanna replace the phrase, reduce single-occupant vehicles, with what we're really trying to do. Is it, is it to reduce congestion? Is it something about reducing carbon emissions? Is it to reduce fuel consumption? I mean, there's some underlying motivating goal, and I think that's-
I'd like to get to that.
Exactly. Because depending on the real goal, it, it actually pulls you in different directions. If, if the real goal is about reducing congestion, then there are plenty of, for example, rural neighborhoods where single occupancy vehicle is just fine, congestion's not a problem, and trying to do a transit solution there is actually counterproductive.
Yeah.
You know, there's not enough of a population center to do that sort of thing, so depending on just what the real goal is behind that, you know, let's, I, I'd like to see that a little, a little more explicit, elsewise, we may end up encouraging counterproductive behavior.
I would really agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Mr. Clark.
So, would it be, this is kind of saying the same thing in a different way, but you could, instead of focusing on reducing single occupancy vehicle trips, you could either, you could, you could say promote high occupancy vehicles, trips where appropriate, or reduce where appropriate, because I do agree with you, I think trying to put a transit system in a rural area is not economically feasible, and so you wouldn't wanna have code, or have the, the plan directing you in that direction, but can we make it more about promoting where, promoting HOV where, where appropriate?
Well, and, and I think even to Commissioner Stall's point, that it's really promoting, let's say, a reduction in congestion, or an increase in efficiency, or some, or perhaps there is some type of sustainability or environmental goal.
I think G6 captures, captures the environmental aspect of it. I mean, I would be fine changing G4 to reduce congestion by encouraging walking, bicycling, and taking transit.
Where, where appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, my point being that Bothell has high-density areas, we have still some that are quasi-rural, and the single-occupant vehicle is gonna be there, and be there for the foreseeable future.
We can certainly work with that, I think that's a good comment, that it's more focused in terms of what the, we're trying to achieve, rather than the way it's worded right now.
Okay. So, how about this point, I think you've kind of gotten the direction, that we'd like to have you kind of rework Goal 4.
Okay.
And, but other than that, I, I like the consolidation. I actually felt, as I read through the Goals 1 through 8, that there was a lot of kind of repetition, or I thought, so I think we're, we're getting somewhere, and I do think taking some time and energy on these goals is really important, because I do think our policies and our actions fall out of these goals, and so, overall, though, I think, I think that it's a really, a positive step that you have up there, those six goals, but if you could just work, rework G4, that'd be great.
So, the other area that I wanted to touch on is about level of service policy, and the city currently has a, a good level of service policy for congestion, vehicular movement, again, consistent with what the PSRC is requiring, is to provide more specific guidance on service levels for other modes, and so, the city isn't quite right to necessarily set a specific level for non-motorized, but for, in the case of transit, in fact, this is very similar to a policy that's already in the plan, is to focus on setting a, a service level for transit that meets the community's expectations, and it can be used as a way to negotiate with transit agencies. Obviously, the city doesn't have control over the frequency or provision of bus service, so, but this service level's similar to what we have shown here, or what we'd be proposing, and we'd be coming back to you with some specifics, if you like the general direction with, that we're heading on this.
Just the housekeeping question, several times in, in the memo and the supporting documentation, figure TR10 and TR9 is, is referenced, I don't see that on the slide, but I, it was in our packet, and I didn't see a TR9 or a TR10, and so then I went back and looked at the other times in our agenda of where the transportation element was incorporated, and I couldn't find it, so, I don't know if you, if you found it as well. I think, so, help me out with TR9 and TR10.
Are you talking about figures?
Yeah. Figure, yeah, figure TR9 and figure TR10.
Okay, so, those figures are basically just a, have a description of where our existing bicycle and non, and pedestrian facilities are, and at this point, it's, it's, it's just referencing where, where feature network, feature network connections are for pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Great. So, I'd love to see that at some-
Absolutely. We're, we're updating those in, in the process, and so, was, just as a reference, assuming that we have a, we all have access to the, to the previous, the previous, the existing, the existing transportation plan, I should say, and-
So, you will, you'll be incorporating that into the plan?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Just the language, at this point, we're just, we're just trying to incorporate the language and, and put that in there right now.
Okay.
I should've included that, those figures in- I should've included that, those figures in.
So maybe in the next, maybe on November nineteenth, that could be included.
Absolutely. Yeah, they will all be included at this point.
Great, thank you.
So, let me just say one thing, you'll see this in this slide, as well as for the bicycle and pedestrian levels of service, we're proposing a simplified service level, you might be aware for the roadways, that we use the letter grades A through F, which works reasonably well for traffic, but not so well for other modes, so we're looking at just a very simple green, yellow, red, and the city would then designate, well, we would like a particular yellow standard in some areas, or a green standard in, say, the downtown area, and so, it's something we found that is pretty easy, easily understood by the public.
Yeah, I mean, that's typical kind of methods for dashboard, and used in all kinds of measurements, so I think we're very much in support of that.
So, the other one, the under bicycle level of service, the city's proposing to do a more in-depth, non-motorized plan subsequent to this comprehensive plan update, and so, whatever comes out of there in terms of a minimum treatment for bicycles, be it a bike lane, or a set of sharrows, whatever that is, would be set at this green level, and you can see that there would be a lower level defined in the yellow, so at this point, until that plan is completed, it's hard to set the specific.
Okay.
Number here, and the same thing is true for the pedestrian facilities, and I will say that, it doesn't show it here, this is for sidewalk requirements, but we would also be recommending to have something comparable for pedestrian crossing treatments, which is also a very important safety feature for pedestrian movement throughout the city. So, okay. So you're back up, Sherman?
Thank you. Okay, so those goals and policies, those, the pedestrian transit, those are, again, just to be incorporated, and again, we wouldn't just introduce, those are not currently in our policies and actions, right? So we're all clear on that. These, the next sections here, the next few slides, I'm just going over some of the actual changes that we did make edits to within the element, street and highway policies and actions, we could go through individually, but they're, to summarize them, they're basically including, to continue including, regional coordination policies and actions, with cooperation with adjacent jurisdictions and other cities on the key corridors that we have, reducing signage requirements for truck traffic in residential areas, there's a, there's a policy to, to put, exist, to put truck restriction signs everywhere, and it's just unnecessary, I don't, at this, I don't believe it's necessary to do that, we don't really have any major, you know, problems with truck traffic in our residential areas, and I think it's just not a, it's just one of the policies that we wanted to remove, because we don't have that problem, and it would be not a good use of putting signage up just for clutter. Maintaining a pavement management system, which we do in a ways now, and we just want to continue that in the State of Good Repair program, where we are looking at having a system that does identify and continue to monitor our current infrastructure, which is the direction of, which is the direction of the PSRC goals. For the neighborhood.
Just a quick question, when you say monitor, what does that mean?
Basically, just having a system where we would develop how to continue looking at our existing pavement, or any, well, the direction of the PSRC that is to invest in your existing facilities, as opposed to having to just continue looking at creating new facilities, and there's a better turn, return on your, that's the direction, that's the information that you get, is that you get a better return on just investing on your existing facilities, and when we say monitor, that could mean, you know, until we develop an exact program, it could mean just keeping an inventory of what we have for our bike network, what do we have for our pedestrian network, and maintaining, having a better schedule for maintenance, for example, and just following that system that we put in place, ultimately, we developed, and just monitoring that, that's what I mean by monitoring. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks, I wasn't sure when you first said it, if that alluded to some new technology, or sensors, or something like that, but thanks for clarifying.
Right, that could mean that later, you know, if we have that resource.
One of the things I would like to see you do, and I think it's actually in the packet, it's done more clearly maybe than what you're doing here, Sherman, and that is, first of all, distinguish between a policy and an action, and then, the policies, let's be sure and line them up with the particular goals, which whatever our six or seven goals are, and now I'm looking at these eight goals that we had, just as an example. So the first bullet point there, include regional coordination policies and actions. That policy supports goal number seven, now this is not from your slide, but actually from our packet.
Yes.
Plan and develop a transportation through intergovernmental coordination consistent with the context of Bothell's regional and local comprehensive planning goals, so, I just, let's make sure that we're kind of connecting the dots here between our goals and our policies and our actions.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is a, going through these updates, it's a little bit difficult to understand what's the difference between an action and a policy, it is actually somewhat repetitive and redundant, if you will, even.
Understood, yep.
Okay, so moving on, the neighborhood protection policies and actions, continue to, one of the changes there is to continue to maintain the neighborhood traffic calming program, as opposed to initiate one, because we have established that, and we have one adopted for the city. Continue to discourage cut-through traffic, but accommodate arterial accessibility, that's, that has to do with the policy that, right now, where you, for new development, we don't want any through, basically, you know, through streets, which makes it somewhat awkward when you're in some developments to, you know, not have that, and it's, how do we continue to maintain that, or do it in a more effective way that does recognize that we need arterial accessibility from this subdivision, but at the same time, trying to design it in a way, or to prove it in a way where you're not encouraging, you know, just movement from outside the neighborhood through another, through a new neighborhood, right? Pursue the public outreach and education as a means of traffic calming, that's to be added there, just, it's the first method of, when we instigate traffic calming measures, that is the first, the first goal we do, is to educate a neighborhood or existing community. Remove monitoring of traffic levels in residential streets, that's, again, an action in there that we felt that needs to, we're just not going, we don't have the resource to continue to just go and do traffic counts everywhere, to continue to see if there's a traffic calming issue. We respond to traffic calming when it is a, brought to our attention as staff, and we will go and do traffic counts to substantiate if there's an issue or not, and that's just part of what we do as a, part of the traffic calming program that's been adopted now. So, to say that we will monitor traffic levels in residential streets is, again, it's just, it's like putting the signs up for truck, you know, to discourage truck traffic everywhere, it's, we're not going.
So are there neighborhoods in Bothell, I'm not aware of, where we're just on a permanent kind of basis, monitoring traffic levels?
We don't.
Okay, so why are we talking about removing them?
Because there's a, well, the policy, let me see, I can go find it exactly. It says.
TR eight twenty-three?
Right, TR eight twenty-three in the.
That's the action, actually.
It says, it says that we will, as an action, regularly monitor traffic levels through residential neighborhoods in order to identify and implement traffic calming measures as early as possible.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that we're not going to just do this proactively, we're going to do it more reactively. We will do it, but it's more if there's a complaint, or we're aware of a particular problem, it's not like we're not going to monitor, but it's not going to be done in this kind of.
Yeah, we'll monitor it as the demand ne, as the demand reaches, that's just.
I remember at, one of the previous meetings where the transportation element came up, that we, I think we discussed this actually quite extensively, and we talked about the nature of Bothell, and that it kind of runs north and south, and the kind of, the heavy traffic corridors tend to kind of run that way, we've got four oh five going through the map, but it's more those east-west, that east-west access, where we do have some neighborhoods that have an issue with that, and so I'd like to see us continue to see what we can do to mitigate. So I don't want us to get out of the traffic calming, or neighborhood calming business, but I think you're just saying we're going to do this in a reactive, a way that, it's a responsive way, let's just put it that way, rather than just monitoring.
Well, that's what our, that's the whole purpose of when we adopted the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, we now have a method, there's a process that we follow, you have to reach a certain criteria for us to, you know, go examine if there's an issue of traffic calming, for example, and, you know, part of that is, you're right, that our, the traffic flow in the city east-west is very challenged, there's very limited corridors that go east-west, so, you know, the traffic that do look for different ways to go east-west do sometimes cut through neighborhoods, and we want to discourage that, if it's not along a corridor that we really haven't expected traffic to do that on.
So we may, I understand the point of striking the action about regularly monitoring traffic levels, but are we investigating new technologies with regards to traffic calming monitoring, if you will, I'm thinking of perhaps photographic sensors, we've actually gotten one of those tickets myself, where, you know, the camera takes the picture, or I've seen them where you have the radar, and it just flashes up, that here's what your speed is, and just to kind of, sometimes just to inform people, are we investigating those kinds of technologies to help in traffic calming?
Absolutely, we have, and we've installed, you know, speed radar detectors, but we're not, we've not had the, we don't have this, you know, direction to go ahead with any photo enforcement type of, you know, mechanism, technology to do that at this time. I think that by, by just looking at where we are having the problems, and addressing those, any traffic calming issues in the neighborhood, in the citywide, it's just a matter of, at this point, just dedicating resources to it, and continuing to use this program that's already been adopted and in place.
All right, thank you.
So again, that's the last bullet there, continue to respond to those neighborhood traffic concerns as, and keep, and keep that, you know, keep a budget for that, for us to address those things. The public transit and transportation demand management, transportation system management policies and actions, continue to coordinate with the transit agencies, where they are looking at adding parking rides or bus stops, any related amenities. SWIFT two, for example, is a community transit plan to extend that service off, down SR five twenty-seven to Canyon Park Business Park right now, and they plan to do that in the next four years, and we want to be, you know, supportive of that, because that would help the congestion issues we have. Pursue joint funding for future facilities with those agencies, explore options to implement the Bothell Circulator, again, that's, that was for the economic development, and we talked about that, you guys are aware of that. Remove the development codes for the design of transit access, again, that is, that is just one of the, one of the, we, the policies that we have in place that I felt, you know, we don't have a control over, because we don't, we don't develop those codes for, or those standards for the transit agencies, they do that, and it just, it was one of the policies that we felt just, probably should just be removed, being that we're trying to, you know, streamline this whole program, you know, streamline and cut back on the whole plan itself, as a goal in general. Continue promoting transit use by developing those stops and encouraging the transportation demand strategies, it's, that's pretty standard stuff there. Bicycle policies and actions, continue to pursue funding, complete the missing links of the North Creek Trail, promote additional bike connections to regional trails and activity centers, and identify the service levels as Don alluded to in our proposed bicycle and pedestrian and transit sections. Update the city exterior TIP to include key bicycle corridors, and to develop a citywide bicycle plan that identifies and supports the programs and projects to encourage development of safe bicycle access to the network, and that is, that is primarily to address the active transportation plan goal of PS, the regional goals that we described earlier. The pedestrian policies, enhance connections to trails and, again, activity centers, education centers, prioritize the connectivity projects based on demand and safety, again, addressing the service levels that we have there to get, you know, from that red light to the green light, if you want. Pursue funding opportunities with the school district and adjacent jurisdictions when they're, when they come up, and we remove some city policies already covered under the federally mandated ADA requirements, some of these, some of the policies and actions that we have in here were discussed, discuss those issues, which, you know, we already have to do now, so it's, seem repetitive to put it in here, and, again, just to bring down this, cut down this man, cut down this whole plan, and get it more concise where we need it, as opposed to having, having these types of policies which are already required by federal law anyways, and that we will have to do in terms of any projects we design, we, you know, those are just required, so. And then the final bullet is just to, again, develop a citywide pedestrian plan, a more thorough one than we have right now, i.e. the two figures that we referred to earlier, TR nine and ten, we are going to expand on that and actually, you know, look at a more comprehensive plan that shows maybe prioritization, identifying which corridors are most important to get that connectivity in, and we're just going to, we're going to, we're going to do a concerted effort to define what those, those projects may be, and how we can, how we can systematically improve, improve both bicycle and pedestrian networks in the future. Okay, so, that kind of covers the changes in general for the policies and actions, goals section, I just wanted to give you a little forecast here on what we will bring next time, and where we are right now, and since we haven't seen you since, you know, June. The transportation element update tasks in progress, we have completed the travel demand model, Fair and Peer has been working with that, us on that, we've calibrated the future scenario analysis, and we've conducted the level of service analysis also for the existing current year and the future. and the future year 2035, uh, those base conditions. Again, we are in the process of looking at subarea analysis. And that may change, you know, we may have to manipulate the, uh, and adjust the, the model to account for those kind of changes. But at this point, the, the results have shown that the existing conditions for all of our, our traffic corridors that we use for concurrency analysis operate at level of service D or better. Under the 2035 base condition where our base land use assumptions and everything have been incorporated, we achieved a level of service E, but with some, obviously some future, uh, future improvement projects that were targeted for some of the concurrency intersections. Those, those projects have been identified. And we are finalizing the, the final recommendations that will go in to the element itself. And we are also developing the cost estimates and finalizing those for those specific projects. And, um, and we're updating a few of the statistical data that you see in the local transportation setting section, uh, mainly just some of the collision history, like I say, there. Finalizing possible roadway classification changes. Not very many at this point that we've seen where we would want to, you know, convert a local street to a collector or anything like that, you know. Just finalizing some of the pedestrian bicycle routes and the data involved with those, some of the other, and some of the other elements you see there. That's what we'll be bringing to our November 19th meeting. And that will, this will all tie that together. And, uh, and one of our next biggest steps, which I wanted to just put on this final slide is, is the, uh, the last section that we will come back with ultimately is to identify the, the transportation funding program. And, um, it will determine, determine the future transportation expenditures and what funding sources we have from local funds, state, federal. And, uh, conduct the analysis to make sure that we have a, a balanced, a balanced approach on that. So I think at this point, we, uh, have any public testimony, which we don't, I'm sure. And, uh, if you have any other questions for me, otherwise we will continue the element update on November 19th with the local transportation setting section. That will give you a little more, uh, details about that part of the element, some of which was included in your packet, the level of service corridors. You saw that. That was, uh, that showed the, where we are and where the, where really, the purpose of giving you that section was to show you the, the hot intersections that we really need to target and look at in terms of, uh, future improvements. That will also help you, guide you in looking at where we load up any subarea changes and, you know, where we're going to have, uh, some traffic, you know, uh, some of the traffic, you know, congestion, that where the biggest tie-ups are.
Okay. Thanks, Sherman.
Time check, where we ran over a little bit, but we're not far off. Let me just ask the commissioner, any questions or comments for?
Can I make a comment, Sherman, before you go?
Yeah.
Um, we, we all spend a lot of time reviewing what is presented before we even come to the meeting.
Yes.
And what we have in our packet is not what was presented. Can you please make sure, next time you come before us, that we have in front of us what it is that you're going to review? Make sure, if you would, make sure that we have tables that are legible. We've got a table in here that I can't read. Make sure that the missing pages, the TR 9, TR 10 is in there, et cetera. I have a lot of questions and comments on, on what was in this package that, I, I don't even know if they're, if they pertain to what, to what you just presented. So I've got to, I've got to go back and, and go through this stuff now and then shoot emails to everybody, I guess. I just, I'm, I'm a little frustrated. I'm a little frustrated because, again, we, you know, we spend time digesting this in order to, to have a, an intelligent conversation and dialogue, so.
Was there, uh, just to help me, you know, prepare better for next time?
You've got, you've got six goals that you're showing here. You've got nine goals in here, you, uh, in, in the package. You've got, um, you've got 22 or 23, you've got 28, I'm sorry, you've got 31 action plans. And up here, I think I saw nine or 10. You've got, um, I, I did. What, what we have is not what we were presented with.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I would agree with that. It was a little, it's a little confusing to me, too. And it, part of it's probably just the subject matters complicated, too. But I think if it were, maybe there's be some effort put into the organization.
The, the document that we were provided is, it's fairly clear in terms of goals, policies, actions. There's a lot of different sections on regional coordination, streets and highways, et cetera. I think I, I went through it pretty closely. I, I, and yet I'm not, I don't think I'm ready to, to, to vote on this language or whether we would recommend it going forward or not. But I do think that that was behind my point about linking up policies with goals, linking up actions with policies. So that, I think that's how we, we really try to read this material so that, and then if we're going to modify an action or a policy, then we kind of understand what it is we're being asked to do. So that would be my recommendation for November 19th, Sherman, would be to, um, kind of, a little more rigidly link, link, um, what we have in front of us and what we were provided in our packet and what you develop on the screen for us. I think it would, it would help you get the outcome from us that you're, you're looking for.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Okay, so, um, at this point, I think we're, we're ready to have, take a motion to continue the public hearing of the 2015 periodic plan and code update. The transportation element will be, uh, actually, I think we have concluded, actually, Dave, haven't we? The amendments regarding accessory. So that really was, was the ADU part of it? That was part of the public hearing of the 2015? Anyway, have we, we haven't concluded that, have we?
Well, you asked us to bring back final quote language on the 19th, uh, November 19th.
So I'd like to hear a motion to reflect, um, that we will continue the public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing for the transportation element to November 19th?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we should also continue the public hearing on the periodic plan and code update to October 15th, one week from tonight, when we'll pick up.
Correct. So let's, let's have another motion to just continue the public hearing for the periodic plan, 2015 periodic plan and code update to October 15th.
Yeah, I move that we continue the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update to October 15th.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving forward with our agenda, we have no study session this evening, no old business. We do have a report from staff, the hearing examiner, third quarter report. We do have that in our packet, Dave. I know I reviewed it. I believe the other commissioners have. Is there anything you'd highlight for us on that?
There, there's not a whole lot there, but, so that's pretty self-explanatory. I do have one other thing that I do want to touch on, schedule-wise. So next week, we'll take, take up the items that were originally scheduled for the first. Plus, we're going to try to do two other subarea plans. It's, it's a lot to cover, but these subarea plans are, we think are fairly straightforward. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get through those. And then, uh, some, two of those subarea plans are scheduled to come back the following week along with a, a third review of the land use element, um, which is also scheduled for, for, for the 15th. I wanted to ask commission if, since a one-week turnaround time is, is difficult to do, if, uh, the commission would be up, would consider moving the 22nd meeting to the 29th. We don't normally meet on a fifth Wednesday when we have it, but, uh, that would facilitate, uh, making that turnaround work. So.
Any feedback on moving from the 22nd to the 29th? I, I will not be in town that day, but that doesn't mean that Commissioner Stahl could not lead the meeting.
No, I'll be here.
Yep. So.
No problem.
Fine, fine with me.
Work for me.
Everybody else, October 29th?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll make that, that change.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.